I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the, hard to believe it's already October 2020, zoning board of appeals meeting. Before we get underway, I have a few administrative announcements. First, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If so notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator. Use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. The meetings are being recorded tonight for the purpose of a record in minutes, so when you come to the podium, please identify yourself with your name and your address and speak clearly into the microphone. The minutes that are being taken are not intended as a transcript, but merely as to be a summary of what was before the board tonight. We follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda near the door. The way it works is that we call the case, then the applicant or their representative comes to the podium, identifies themselves, states their address, pauses a moment, raises their right hand to be sworn, and then presents their case. During the presentation of the case, the zoning board members have an opportunity to question the applicant and engage in discussion with the applicant. Once that process is concluded and the board has no more questions or comments, then the case will be open to public input. Anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding the application will come to the podium and identify themselves along with their address and direct their questions and comments to the board, not to the applicant. We break that into three categories. First category is those who wish to speak in favor of the application, then those who wish to speak in opposition to the application, and then last, those who wish to speak to some aspect of the application but aren't necessarily for or against the application. Once the public input process has been completed, the hearing will be, I'm sorry, the applicant or their representative will have an opportunity to respond to the public input, and then, when that's completed, then I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to the next case. After all the cases have been heard, the board will take a short recess, and when we return, we will deliberate each case in order of the applicants that are still present. So if the applicant whose case was first on the agenda has left, and the second applicant is still present, we would take the second applicant's case first and then take the rest of the cases for the applicants who are still present, and then we would go back to the top of the agenda and deliberate on those cases for which the applicant has left. No further input is allowed during that portion unless it is specifically requested or invited by the board. If you wish to leave, you can find out the results by calling the planning and zoning department tomorrow morning after 9:00 a.m., or if you get home in time and have cable, you can watch it on channel 13 something. So, I believe that covers all of the matters that we had on administratively. Before we get underway with the agenda, I would like to welcome our new member tonight, Isaac Elliott. He is serving as an alternate member because Mr. Scott is not able to be here tonight. Mr. Elliott is filling in. That's the role of the alternate.
Mr. Hart and Mr. Upson are not present?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Scott is here. It's Mr. Hart. I'll be okay. Been a long day. So, the other thing that I wanted to mention, this is October, it is breast cancer awareness month, which strikes near and dear to, very close to my heart actually, geographically and physically, and so I'd like to just encourage those who are battling that to hang in there and to remember those who were less than successful in their fight. So, if we could have our first case called.
Case ZB 2020-10-1, upon the matter of request by Daniel and Peggy Pap O'Brien for an area variance to install six-foot-high sideyard fencing exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 34 Aragon Avenue in an R2 residential district.
My name is Daniel O'Brien. Live at 34 Aragon Avenue. As you can see, I'm disabled, and my wife very kindly got me a puppy, and...
Need you to raise your right hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I assume that's your wife standing next to you?
This is my wife.
If you plan on testifying, if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Sorry.
Sorry. So, to kind of keep it short, we have a puppy, and our puppy is wonderful for therapy and everything to keep me moving around, but we have steps that go down the side of our, you know, to get in and out. Looking forward to, you know, progression of my aging, we would like to put a fence just south of our side door so that we can just let her out the side door, and she's a good neighbor to everybody in the neighborhood. One of her particular quirks is that she can jump over a four-foot fence, and so we'd really like to keep her safe and keep all of our neighbors happy with us. So, if it would be okay, we would very much like to put a six-foot gate across the driveway and down just a little bit. Well, I mean, it's going to go all the way around the backyard, but there's only a small part that needs the variance.
And what kind of fencing were you contemplating, and I assume you'd use fencing for the gate?
It will be fencing for the gate. It'll be a six-foot dog-eared fence, wood.
So it'll be kind of solid?
Yes.
And on the northwest side, you're just going to the rear foundation?
On the northwest side, it'll just come over to the back, the back corner of our house. In fact, there's a fence there currently that's a four-foot fence, and it goes all the way to the front corner of the house. We are going to have the piece taken out that's in the very front of the house. It's a chain link now, so that we can cut the grass in that little alley between, you know, between the fence and the side of the house, and we'll be able to get to that from the front of the house, and the fence will be at the back corner there.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it to public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone here who'd like to talk to us about the hidden costs of getting a puppy? Or anything like that?
She's a very cute puppy. She's a dalmatian.
All right. Speaking of which, we will close the, seeing none, we will close the hearing, move on to the next case on our agenda. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
ZB 2020-10-2, upon the matter of request by Nicole Buckham for area variances to install a sideyard fencing exceeding maximum permitted height and install front yard fencing that exceeds maximum linear footage and in certain portions exceeds maximum height and utilizes nonconforming type fencing on premises 2600 St. Paul Boulevard in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicole Buchanan. I reside at St. Paul Boulevard 2600, and just bought the house four years ago.
If you'd raise your right hand, ma'am. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, just bought the house four years ago, and it was on foreclosure, and for six years, so I need some outside, need some tender loving care, but inside I would like moving ready, so I'm looking at it, I purchased it. I have a granddaughter that's four years old that's live, reside with me. I'm a caretaker, and it's not safe for her to play outside without somebody watching her, because I'm right by the main, we're very busy. I have two good neighbors. We all get along. Like today, we did a project, cut the trees down, but the back fence, we all did it together, paid for it together. So I was telling, I put notice up for the fence. They see I did a peg line, so I told them all about it, and everybody's on board. I would like to have a fence put up, a spiral fence, Vanna's fence, sorry. I would like to the side on St. Paul, like five and a half feet high, six feet the highest. The back could be five, five, it would be five, five and a half all the way around, if it's five or six. The front will be like three, three and a half feet at the front, and a picket fence or open fence, just for the state of my granddaughter, and I intend to get her a dog, just like the previous, but that to be safe, and I know this, you can tell people how to live, and since I've been there, I got one of my neighbor that stuff throws out, and it's all in my yard too. I mean, I don't fuss about it, because I'm a much older person. I'll go clean it up, but I don't want to keep seeing that every day. I just want some privacy, and it also will also enhance the place. I don't know if anyone of you have passed the house recently, but since I do some outside work, painted up, I got so many compliments. So I think if I put a fence up, it should also enhance the place and compliment the place, and safety is a big issue for my granddaughter, more importantly.
I guess I have a question. This is one of those corner lots where, is it, is St. Paul considered the front yard on this? Okay. So this is another one where it doesn't necessarily line up with the use?
Yeah, so where it's, doesn't matter where the doors or the entryways are to the building or what looks and feels like the backyard. In this case, the, and also where the house sits on the lot doesn't really come into play.
So if I understand correctly, fronting on St. Paul, you want to have a three-and-a-half foot-high picket fence?
Yes, so picket or open.
Some kind of open, but...
Yes, three and a half feet about the front.
And then the rest, you were asking for five or five and a half or six feet, right?
Five, I'll go five and a half feet.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that most of the readily available pre-made and fabricated fence panels are six feet high, and to get a five-and-a-half one would involve...
Well, I'll go five feet then.
Hmm?
I'll go five feet.
Well, or five feet would involve cutting down a foot, so my question for you is, I think it's more expensive to do a five or a five-and-a-half foot fence, so what you would want would be a six foot, right?
Okay.
Up to six, and if you can find five, you don't have to go all the way, but...
My neighbors are in broadcast, I do talk, talk of dialogues of any problem, any issue before I come here. We do talk about it, and they're fine with it. I don't have my issue.
And the five, five and a half or six-foot fence, that would be on the north and the east sides, correct?
The side to St. Paul. It should be all around the back, the back fence, to on Wimbledon side, that neighbor and the one on St. Paul's.
Yes, okay.
The front will be three and a half.
Three and a half?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Just so you know, there's a portion of the front yard that is five feet. Anything forward of the house, so that one picture, three, page three?
Page three, she's looking for a five foot, but I'm suggesting to her...
That's front yard. That's considered, okay.
Right. I'm suggesting to her it might be easier, a lot easier and a lot cheaper to go six instead of five.
I'll go cheaper, sir, definitely.
Yeah, five foot, yeah. You can get a five foot.
Is five foot a standard issue?
Well, a lot of people get five also. I mean, I don't know the pricing, but a lot of people go between that. Some people like five, and they come in and get a permit for five. I don't know.
I don't know. All the ones that I've seen that are like readily out in front of the stores are six feet.
I've seen that too. I've been looking around and observe that.
Four's common, too.
That's another one. So if, if we were to approve up to six feet and up to four feet for you, that would work?
Yeah. Four, as I said, I mean, I'm new to this fencing thing, I mean, doing my own...
Yeah, but I'm not sure that there's...
Five and a half.
Three and a half or five and a half. I think the six and the four are a lot more readily...
I'll go up to six or four.
Okay.
I prefer a six.
And if you find three and a half?
Oh.
That would be fine, too.
For picket, picket fences are three and a half. That's how the code came, yeah.
Three and a half?
Picket fence, like for the front, I wouldn't go too high.
No.
I would go three and a half. I don't want to be too enclosing.
I just want to make sure that you don't have to spend more than you need to in order to do what you want.
I appreciate that, because I really don't want to spend more than after.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who'd like to speak against the application? I'm sorry, did you want to speak in favor? Step right up.
My name's Kim Kazdan. I live at 161 Sunset Street in Rochester, 14606.
Okay.
I don't need to swear in?
Nope.
Cool. I'm supporting, I've Nicole's friend, been her friend for several years now. Granddaughter is lovely, but she, she does like to run, and I was listening to you speak about the backyard, something about it being, or the front yard not counting as like the backyard, but really, she doesn't have a backyard. It might be like two feet wide, so the front yard is really the usage of the house or the yard that she would be playing in, and so it would be really important for her to be able to have that, and Nicole doesn't do anything that, that is, would look or deter the look of the house itself, so she's done a great job at rehabbing it. That's it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to the application? Would anyone like to talk to us about corner lots, fences, or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case, and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you, ma'am.
ZB 2020-10-3, upon the matter of request by A Best Construction, acting as agent for Jack and Kathy Evans for area variances to construct a attached garage addition with less required front and side setbacks on premises 51 Nob Hill in an R1 residential district.
All right, Marty Hill, owner of A Best Construction.
And the people behind you are the applicants? If you could identify yourselves?
Yes, and Kathleen Evans.
And Jack Evans.
And if you'd all raise your right hands, do you swear and affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you.
So, they just want, they've got two vehicles, and they want to add another garage on so they can put them both inside. They're the only people on the street with a one-car garage, and I think the setback we're asking is just one foot over. The lot's about 100 feet wide, so the immediate neighbor directly to the east was fine, completely fine. In fact, he's talked to me about doing addition on his house as well, but either way, you know, they've got the two vehicles and they'd like to get them inside, and we're matching, if you look at the, you know, the drawing, the roof line, we're just kind of duplicating it, carrying everything forward or to the side, I should say, to the east, so if you look at the front drawing, the front elevation, we kept the schematic or architecturally the same, where you got two foot, two foot, two foot between the, you know, the center column, the two right sides, so doors are going to be the same. New doors going in, so we're not going to have an old door and a new door. Both doors will be new, so everything will blend in. The roof, I guess that's about it, you know, pretty straightforward, so.
I think the people across the street and slightly to the west are the only other ones on the street with a one-car garage.
Is there another one-car garage? There is? Oh, okay.
Everyone else has two. I went up and down and noticed that, that they were the only ones, and then I thought they were the only ones, and then as I was driving, I saw the other one, and I said, oh, there's one more. So that'll give us something to do in the future, perhaps.
I live on that street also.
Yeah.
But, so, yeah, I think, I mean, cosmetically, it'll look great, it'll certainly have to the looks of the home, and I don't know if Jack and Kathy have any questions or comments.
It'll be interesting to see how long you actually are able to put the second car into the garage.
How's that? I'm sorry. How's that?
Well, usually what my experience is that when you add on space for a second car, it gets filled with other stuff, and then you have one car still out in the driveway and the other one's...
Yeah, yeah, probably so, but they, their car garage is really like a car and a half because they've got four foot to the side, so they got room, and then it's also 21 feet deep, and one of their cars is a Chevy Trax, which isn't real big, so I think it'll be fine. The whole intention is to get both cars in there, but you're right, people, in this case, I don't think that would be...
Then they add another shed.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here, I'm sorry, is there any questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about garages and how quickly they get filled up with other than cars or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter, move on to the next case on our agenda. Thank you.
ZB 2020-10-4, upon the matter of request by Michael Brunisima for a use variance to reduce the lot size of a parcel with a nonconforming use and an area variance for lot depth for a proposed re-subdivision of parcel on premises Tax ID 092.16-1-15 adjacent to 780 Hellendale Road in an R1 residential district.
Hi, my name's Mike Brunisma. I live at 780 Hellendale Road, Rochester, New York, 14609.
And I'm Danielle Brunisma, same address.
You both raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. So before you started, we were having a discussion up here about your application, and I was questioning why we need to have a use variance, and apparently it's because if you subdivide, then it's as if you started out that way, but my understanding is that this, what used to be a chicken coop?
Yep.
Has been there for about 100 years?
Almost, yeah.
So I certainly couldn't see how that would change the character of the neighborhood for a while.
Yeah, exactly.
We approve a lot of chickens here.
I'm not looking for any chickens.
So if those people decide they don't want them, can they come and put them in your chicken coop?
No.
She says no.
So basically, all you're doing is changing lot lines, and you're not even changing a blade of grass on the property, right?
No, no, it's kind of a strange situation. It's a private road that I own all three lots that are on the road. The house is on a very small lot with no room for expansion, and if you were to ever want to build to the house to have a garage or a deck or anything like that, you couldn't do it because the lot actually goes with the chicken coop lot, which is on, there's a few different maps in there that are pretty helpful that show like the provision, like we wanted to, the highlighted one is the ones we wanted to make it, the lot 1615. So we wanted to make that lot 16 lot and extend it to the east.
Kind of keep everything on the one side of the driveway to the right?
Yeah, so basically, one side of the street, other side of the street. I can give you a brief, where is this here? Lost it. It's probably under here. Okay, let's start over. Okay, it's my understanding that I need a use variance in order to enlarge one of my three lots, while maintaining a nonconforming use of a barn which sits on a lot without a house. I would like to enlarge that 780 Hellendale lot by taking land from the barn or chicken coop lot. So as you know, these lots have been there since the early 1900s, they're built by my great-grandfather and my great-great-grandfather, and it was originally over eight acres and used for farming. Now much, now much of the original property makes up the erotic way Bay West Park and 590, which is why that lot is cut at an angle like that. So the house on 780 was built prior to existing building codes and does not meet today's minimum building lot requirements. The changes that I'm proposing will create a conforming building lot for the dwelling, while allowing the ability to build an attached garage or deck. The end of the lot with the barn, which is only used for storage now, and that's all I'm planning on never using it for, is just for storage, was drawn at an angle to allow for the 590 ramp. The lot's kind of excessively large for what it's being used for, since it was used as farmland, and it's no longer used for farming, so I cannot realize a reasonable return on it due to a high tax burden, I guess would be my reason. My understanding that I need a use variance to keep the barn with this requested change to the lot lines.
When, that was one of the questions that I had when I reviewed your application. You made reference to a high tax burden?
Right.
And you attached two tax bills?
Mm-hmm.
One is under 500, the other's under 400?
Yep, that would be for the DOT 15 lot that's, the chicken coop is currently on, so...
It's a lot lower than the tax bills I see.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the lot with the house on it's like five times that, but...
Right, oh, of course. All right. I'm just saying that the high tax burden doesn't really ring...
I know.
Particularly persuasively. But you basically want to keep things the way they are?
Right.
And have, be in conformity with whatever the town says you need to have, right?
There would likely need to be an area variance for the, if we were to draw that line straight down the middle like I'm proposing, because the lot, the new lot would not meet the dimension variance or codes, but it would meet the area square footage, because it's kind of at an angle like that, so would still need a variance for that eventually, but I don't have like the resub map for it now because I wanted to make sure that we could get the use variance before I went through all that. And like I said, I went to all the neighbors and I got them to sign the petition and everything, so everybody seemed to be okay with it, so that's about as far as we got with that.
For the record, submitted with the application was a letter expressing agreement by John Heckler at 800 Hellendale Road, Sister Mary Marvin at 822 Hellendale Road, Karen Nolan at 786 Hellendale Road, and Ruth Santiago at 770 Hellendale Road. Those are all your immediate neighbors, I think.
Yeah, those would be all the bordering properties.
And I just wanted to note for the board's information, this map change isn't subject to subdivision approval by the planning board because it's not creating any new lots. So if this, if the, if the existing structure weren't there and the lot met the minimum standard as far as dimensional, this would have no board review whatsoever, but it's because they were trying to rearrange the lines in such a way, and they have this pre-existing structure, that's what's bringing them to this board.
So this is what some people might refer to as a technicality.
That's certainly one way of putting it, for sure.
Does anyone else on the board have any comments or questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? Would anyone like to talk to us about leaving things the way they are and just conforming to technicalities or anything like that? Seeing none, we will close the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will be in recess till 7:40.
Thank you.
And the applicant for St. Paul Boulevard is still here. And the applicant for Nob Hill is still here. And the applicant for Hellendale Road is still here. So for the first time in a long time, we're actually going to deliberate on the cases in the actual order they appear on the agenda because no one has left. So the, let me get my sheets together here. With respect to the application for 34, uh, Aragon Avenue, this is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Uh, I'll move that we approve the application as presented. Um, it's not a significant variance, um, it's a short, uh, distance across, uh, the front, uh, across the driveway. Um, the height of the fence is also not, uh, an extreme variance, six feet, um, versus four feet. Um, the, the applicant has a, a dog that will grow and jump over the fence, um, and it's simply a safety issue and an issue of being able to keep the dog in the yard, um, respecting the neighbors. Um, that type of fence shouldn't be out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, and I can't imagine any environmental impacts, um, of building a six-foot fence across your driveway.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Um, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. Two more board members are absent, but we have Mr. Elliott present with us, so we are partially constituted. And we'll move on to the next application, which is pertaining to 2600 St. Paul Boulevard. This is also a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Excuse me, Chairman, I'm so sorry to interrupt this. Um, uh, staff is out just verifying with the owner or the property owner exactly what was being requested as far as where and what fence type, because the application only included the image of the picket style.
Uh-huh.
So do you mind if, would you mind moving that to the end of deliberation so we can verify what was being requested and make sure that you have that information for the board's consideration?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we'll move on to the application pertaining to 51 Nob Hill. This is also a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion.
Great.
Uh, I make the motion that we approve as presented. Um, the attached garage looks like it will line up perfectly with the established garage and it's clearly, um, what the neighborhood is, is doing almost everyone. Um, so I think it will only enhance the character of the neighborhood, um, and, uh, is the situation self-created? Yes, but for some of us who also dream of one day having two garages instead of just one for the car, I am in full favor of, uh, of this moving forward as presented.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. Two board members are absent, but fortunately Mr. Elliott is with us, so we are almost fully constituted. We'll move along to 780 Hellendale Road. This is a type two action for secret purposes. Uh, I'll make a motion with respect to, uh, this matter, that we, uh, grant the, uh, variance as requested. The usual factors for use variance are that no reasonable return on the investment can be realized, that we don't have any proof concerning reasonable return, but it seems to me that really only applies when they want to actually do something on the property that they're not already doing. And this has been there for about 100 years, so it doesn't seem to me that that, uh, factor is actually applicable in this case. Unique circumstances, again, all they're doing is changing a lot line. They're not changing anything with respect to what's physically present on any of the lots involved. Since they're not changing anything, it won't change the character of the neighborhood. I'm not sure that many people are really much aware of where lot lines are. Uh, the application is not, the, uh, circumstance is not self-created, uh, because all he wants to do is rearrange lot lines that have been varied by construction of, uh, expressway and other things. So I would, that would be that we grant the variance as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
Were you picking on that one? There's two.
I, I got it. Ryan was louder.
He was.
Anyone, uh, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, do we have to do two votes on this or just one covers both? Because one's an area and one's a.
Oh, well, this would also include the area variance, which, uh, again, since it's not, it's not going to change the neighborhood character because no one, thank you for pointing that out, no one's aware of where the lot lines are anyway. Uh, the alternative that doesn't require a variance would be to have a lot that really isn't, uh, functional as it is because it's not attached to the lot with the house, which is where he would be using that particular, uh, part of the property. It's not a substantial request, have no adverse effect on physical or environmental conditions and again, it's not a self-created circumstance.
Did you indicate seeker?
Yeah, it was type two. Yep. So any, uh, discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, uh, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. Two members are absent, but we have Mr. Elliott present tonight. And now we can get to the 2600, is it 2600? 2600 St. Paul Boulevard. As I mentioned previously, this is also a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make, uh, motion with respect to this application after we get clarification from, uh, Donna or Carrie as to what exactly?
Right, so just to be clear, because, um, Ryan had asked, where's the open? The open's going to be the part along Wimbledon Road and along St. Paul and then along the property line going north.
So that would be the south and the west sides.
The, um, west and south, yeah. Great. So the north, the north line, part is in the front and part is in the side, but all of it should like to be solid six.
And then she's allowed to have the six coming down the east side because that is the backyard as far as the code goes, right?
Right.
Okay, all right. So with that clarification, does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application, uh, with the amendment that we grant, uh, a two-foot variance in the height of the fence, um, and increase that up to six feet if the applicant chooses to go with five, five and a half, um, but give them the option to go up to six if it's less cost prohibitive. Um, I don't see any adverse environmental impacts. Um, the fence appears to be within the style of the neighborhood, especially with the, the shorter, um, open fence, uh, across the street-facing, uh, uh, edges of the yard. Um, the situation, uh, is only partially self-created, uh, there's a, uh, you know, safety issues that are, you know, they're, they're not self-created. There's safety issues with having kids in a yard without a fence and a neighbor, um, uh, that, that could cause some headaches. Um, and, uh, it's not, uh, you know, while, while the variance might seem, um, somewhat large, again, the, the, the configuration of the lot, the angle of the house on the lot and, um, the driveway being on the side and the configuration of the lot makes that, um, makes it an odd situation where the code seems a little bit unreasonable.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I just, uh, need that point of clarification again. So you're saying the, the side closest to Wimbledon and then the, the opposite side, then it would be, I think, the north side, that's going to be picket or is that going to be the vinyl where there's no holes through it?
It's going to be picket side along the Wimbledon roadside and along St. Paul.
Okay.
And then when the corner, when the, when the front yard fencing turns along the interior lot on the north side.
Yeah.
To lot which labeled Lot 2.
Yeah.
That would be the place where the, they're proposing solid.
Okay.
And am I correct to say the solid parts, the part that could be six feet, right?
That's, that's my understanding.
Okay.
In the way that I've.
Just so we're all understanding.
Right, and that the, and that the street facing.
Okay.
Parts of the yard on Wimbledon and St. Paul are what are open and four foot.
Okay, all right. And then, and then the size of the picket one, that, what was that?
Well, yeah, you can get a picket for three and a half, that's how we decided it in the code, right? That's normal.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But that's, that's not a, the height of that fence isn't an issue, correct? Just the linear footage.
Just linear footage in the front yard.
Well, if they're three and a half feet high, you're right.
Right, okay.
And from my understanding, they're fine with that.
Yeah. As long as it's, I, I just wasn't clear on whether or not the, I know this about the six foot, but I wasn't sure about three and a half versus four. But three and a half is what's available, so then we can stick with that, okay. All right, any other questions or comments from, or discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We have two members of the board absent, but fortunately Mr. Elliott is with us, so we're almost fully constituted. That concludes the matters that were on our agenda for this evening. There is one other matter and that is, um, the minutes from the, our August 3rd meeting were sent out with the, uh, package. Did everyone have a chance to review those, uh, minutes? were sent out with the, uh, packets. Did everyone have a chance to review those, uh, minutes?
I didn't receive any minutes.
Yeah, I don't think I did either.
Um, okay, it's possible that, um, are, it's, I don't know if they mailed...
We got these at the meeting.
Yeah, the last meeting, these were handed out, Michelle.
Did anything come via email?
Oh, that's right, they were handed out at the last meeting. So we do, we did get them, just they weren't mailed with the packet. Actually, the packet, I think, was handed out last meeting.
No, that, yeah, the packets were handed out last meeting.
It's August, it was them.
Right. So did we already vote on these minutes as well?
I guess, I think we did last month.
Yeah, I think the, we'd be looking at the September 14th minutes. And if you don't have those in your possession, then we can, uh, package them for next month's meeting.
Alright, so I stand corrected. We don't have minutes. I saw them here. Alright, then in that circumstance, we are adjourned.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Aronacoid Zoning Board on ICAT Government Access.